Conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started with the Lander County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commission, May 14th, 2020. This is also being held via auto conference by go-to meeting, alright? So we're gonna go ahead and do the pledge allegiance, please. Art, you want to lead this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're going to go ahead and do a moment of silence. Alright, we're going to move on. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Judy?
I don't have anything.
Alright, very good. Brian?
Nothing to report.
Aye. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nothing to report.
Kathy?
Yes, I do, I'm not going into all the ones that we do, the committee meetings that we do almost every day and that type of thing, but I did have a JPS, which is our Justice and Public Safety National Meeting, on the 6th of May. They're looking at a lot of different things, but the biggest thing is they're saying that most of our Sheriff's Department and our Police Department and all of them are out there with the older seniors especially. They said they are apprehending, but they are not arresting because they don't want to bring them in for the COVID-19. So if there's any way they can do that, that's pretty much what they're doing. And the Bureau of Justice has got, under the CARE Act, some emergency supplemental grant funding, which they can use. If we're interested in anything like that, the applications are good up until, I think, May 29th is our deadline. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, and I have not, I don't have any. So we'll go ahead and move on to staff. Reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended?
Right, thank you. Start out with crickets. Crickets seem to be, not seem to be, crickets are a big issue in the county right now. I will tell you that last year we bought two pallets of the cricket bait. We went through that pretty quick. We ordered four more and received four more pallets last week, two for the north and two for the south. Roden Bridge has been out actively poisoning or putting the bait down, and I hope it's making, I hope it's making some kind of a difference. I get phone calls pretty regularly saying crickets are at my house. I left for the day and I came back and they're all over my porch or coming in my house. So we are working on it with best we can. Last, I had discussion we had with Department of Ag is there was some possible aerial spraying. I do not know if they've started that yet, but we have put a lot of bait out. Like I said, we've had a total of three pallets in the north and three pallets in the south to work on the cricket issues. So if they're, if they continue, please contact myself or Bert, or the public can contact myself or Bert, and we will look at those areas and target them if needed.
I've got a question, Keith.
Yes.
How's the county working, you know, with the, in the outlining areas when it's BLM land? We working together with them?
We've been working with BL, well, through the Department of Agriculture, yes. We have been working in those areas, and that was the initial holdup, is that Ag had put out some type of a comment period on what they were going to use, and that ended, and once that ended, we were right on it the next day with Ag's approval or okay. COVID-19, currently, we have 405 individuals that have been tested in the county. 388 have come back negative. We have 19 positives, and we have 46 pending. I'm not sure of how many have actually recovered and returned to work. And Brandy has patients this morning, so that was what she wanted to pass on to you. I can find out how many have actually recovered and were able to return to work. Next, on our airport contracts, our FAA contracts, we opened bids on April 28th. Sierra Nevada Construction was the low bidder for the hangar taxiway line in Austin at $827,700. Those will come before you shortly for your final, your approval. That is a grant as well through the FAA. The total grant amount was $1,070,607. So we are under the grant amount even, and it still is a match. There's the potential there under the CARES Act for that to be a 100% covered grant. So we're still waiting on that. Battle Mountain, three bids were received. The total bid was $4,392,940. Once again, the same thing. We have a grant, a grant match on that, but the potential there for the CARES Act to cover that 100% is out there. We filed the applications with the FAA to hopefully cover that, and it would be 100% paid by the FAA. That's the goal here. One of the things NACO Nevada National Association Counties has put out, and we'll be working on this shortly, is it's called "We Are Counties." It's gonna be a countywide video that'll be put together, and we're just asking, they're just asking that individuals hold up "We Are Counties," and we're gonna show all what Lander County is, how we're a county, and we're working with this COVID-19. So we'll be coming around, we'll have a little sign for you to hold and identify yourself. It'll all be put together in one big statewide video that'll go to the National Association Counties just to show unity. And I think the rest of the stuff is on the agenda, but we do need, I do need to request a closed litigation hearing prior to getting into the agenda, if we could, please. Thank you.
This is Judy, I have a question for Keith.
I'm gonna, could not hear you, what?
This is Judy, I have a question for Keith.
Alright, go ahead.
Is, who was the low bidder for the Battle Mountain Airport?
Who's the low bidders for the Battle Mountain Airport?
Looking right now. Oh boy, where did it go? Oh, Quilcon, Quilcon Contractors.
Quilcon or Qualcon?
Q-U-A-L-C-O-N of Mindon is the low bidder, and they are teaming with Honeywell Construction of Winnemucca.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
So then, question real quick. So then after I do the public comment, is that when you want to go into a closed?
Sure, that would be fine, thank you.
Okay. Alright, so for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend to make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting if any, and discussions of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based on time or place and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. So at this point, we're gonna go into a closed litigation meeting?
Is there any public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. So are we ready for public comment, Robert, before I ask? Okay, so do we have any public comment? Alright, very good, thank you.
Ted and Judy, we'll be calling you back shortly on another line.
Okay. Muted.
The consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed or acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of May 14th, 2020 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of December 5th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of December 19th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of January 9th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of January 23rd, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of February 27th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of April 9th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number eight, approval of April 23rd, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number nine, approval of payroll change requests.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve number one, the approval of May 14th Agenda Notice. Number seven, approval of April 9th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. I don't have any record of any of others being in our books.
Alright, are we good? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Judy says aye.
I'm sorry, Judy, what?
Judy said aye.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so the rest have been polled, correct? Because we don't have them? We don't have any?
I'm sorry?
The rest, we don't have any of the other meeting minutes, so?
No.
Okay, very good, alright.
No other, no other minutes and no payroll change requests.
Alright, going on to number one. For possible action to approve/disapprove the payments of bills?
I'll need to abstain from check number 207648 and 207714, they're made to my employer.
I make a motion that we approve the check 207648 and 207714.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Abstain?
And I make a motion that we approve the balance of the bills.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, very good. Moving on to number two. Commissioners, for possible action for discussion of issues related to the federal and state of Nevada economic recovery plans and further discussion of possible action that Lander County can take as it relates to any assistance or support to local businesses in reopening with the appropriate health protection in place.
Ted, I'd ask you to get into the specifics of that, please.
I don't know if I'm comfortable giving you a specific to this. What this is basically, there's a lot of feedback on my end.
There's a lot of feedback on his end.
Would you like me, would you like me to try Ted?
Ted?
Yes.
Are you on speaker?
Yes.
No, I mean, do you have your phone on speaker?
Yes.
Take it off and see if that helps.
Alright. Can you hear me better?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Alright, we'll try this one. Alright, what this is, there's still feedback, but what this is, is Keith was asked to put this on to see if there's anything that the county can do as a county to assist in support or assistance to local businesses in reopening even before the governor allows us to reopen. So that's the issue in front of us. As I'm aware of it. Keith?
Yeah, that's correct, Ted. They're open but on a limited basis. Maintaining social distancing in the restaurants, maintaining face masks, required face masks for the employees, recommended face masks for the patrons. So I do believe everything is open at this time?
No.
Oh, no, it's not, okay. Oh, that's correct, thank you, Sheriff.
Massage, yeah, massage, tough act, fast.
Yeah, so there are some things that are not open. I'm not sure about the flower shop.
She's open.
Okay, so the flower shop's open, but there are some limitations with?
What about our other, like, organizations, our churches, our other, are they still not able to assemble and?
No, they're not.
Oh, that's the groups of, we're still at the group of ten.
Because they can't go to group of ten.
Yes, that's still at group ten at least.
So again, I'll state my, my position is that I'm against it. I swore into this seat as to uphold the Constitution, and it's a complete infringement against people's constitutional rights. And it's, it's our job to see that those rights are protected, and because there's an emergency declaration doesn't mean that it's okay to take somebody's constitutional right. If somebody wants to stay home and not gather, doesn't want to go and partake and patron one of our businesses, that's their choice. But to take everybody else's free choice away that was constitutionally given to them is wrong. And I'm, and just, I'm stating my position on it again.
I agree with you, Brian, 100%. I think that, for myself, and I'm just gonna speak generally, I think most everybody was concerned right from the beginning. I was waiting to wake up in the morning and hear 2,000 homeless people died in Las Vegas, 500 homeless people died in Reno, homeless people dying everywhere. The homeless people aren't dying off as fast as the people who stayed at home. So I, I want to open completely. I think that it's just wrong to?
Commissioners, let me, let me, let me give you a legal background on this. I'm gonna advise you, just like every other DA in the state has advised their county commissioners, and that is that technically the county commissioners cannot open up their counties if the state has closed it. If they do, it probably is a better question. If they do attempt to do that, they can have federal and state funds withheld from them. And the state itself will, in all likelihood, do that. I agree with both commissioners who have spoken so far. I believe it's a constitutional issue, and I believe that the people who own businesses and run businesses in Lander County have the constitutional right to stay open. And I don't believe that the governor has the power to overcome that. That being said, we as a county do not have the authority to over, to do what the state has advised against without losing a benefit. So the individual constitutional right lies with the business owner, not with the county government. So some type of assistance or support from the county government would probably be the only thing we can legally do without incurring a substantial, a substantial deficit by both the state and the, if that's understandable.
Well, and I think that, this is Kathy, not me, to interrupt you, but like, I'll repeat what I said last time, when I spoke with Amadee's office, they specifically said that you start, you know, yes, I agree with everyone. I agree that we should not be meddling in the middle of it. However, the state and federal funding are, that would be FEMA money, other money, what, little money we're gonna get from the state anyway with cuts, it's gonna, it's gonna be small, but they can withhold all of that if we go against that order. And I just think that that's, like, my example was if we had a train wreck in the middle of town and we needed FEMA, they could deny us FEMA funds, correct? If we go against?
Yes.
Yes, and that's, but where it makes it a little nerve, nerve wracking is they hold us, you know, they hold their foot on our necks, unfortunately, but if we need that money for those, that as well, we don't get it.
That's where they trap you, is with the money.
Unfortunately.
That's where they trap you.
We sell out our constitutional rights.
Yeah, no, and I agree, and I agree.
I mean, it's a double-edged sword.
It is, and I agree.
But I see how it does lie in the hands of the individual person as far as their constitutional right. I guess we as a commission board could ask that no one in our county be punished if they decide to gather, if they decide to open. That's something that we could take a stand on, is it not, Ted?
Yes, it is. You can make recommendations about the sheriff's office and to the district attorney's office, and you can also make recommendations to the state. Do not proceed against any of these people and try to pull their state licenses. But you can offer assistance, you can offer advice, you can make recommendations.
Basically?
But you can't tell anybody what to do.
Right, basically making the statement that, yes, there's an executive order put out from the governor stating this, but then you also have your constitutional rights, so you're gonna have to be big boys and girls and make up your own mind, but Lander County will not take a stance on anything that infringes on your constitutional right.
As long as they take the appropriate health protections.
Right.
Ted, this is Art.
Yeah.
We've already declared ourselves a constitutional county, haven't we? With the Second Amendment?
We, for Second Amendment purposes, yes, we did.
I can't hear. For Second Amendment purposes only?
No, with second, fourth, and fifth, I believe that the thing says. That we believe in the Constitution, we believe in our oath that we took as elected officials, that we would uphold both the state and federal Constitution against those who would oppose it, both foreign and domestic.
Okay. So my point is, we're already on the road declaring what we feel our count, how it should operate, and?
It's up to the business owners.
Patsy hasn't said much.
Thank you. Of course, we think things are a little bit different in the South because there's so few of us. So when our bars are closed down, many of them are saying, I don't get 10 people in here at a time on a regular day. So, you know, we think we're different than some of the bars, and I'm sure that even the bars up here could do something like that. But at any rate, what we're looking at is if we make the stand, and it's on record because this is all recorded, of course, and I agree with all of you, at least we won't take away their business license or their liquor license and things that we have control over. We're saying we're letting them, knowing what the governor has said, and we don't want to be in pure civil disobedience, so we just tell them, this is what the governor said, but we're not taking any other further action. And that would be easier for our Sheriff's Department too, that gets the calls with the complaints, I think, and they have to go out and say something, and what can they say? This is what the governor said, you're not open yet, you don't serve food. And yet, some of our bars have just got a takeout window, and they said, if I don't make any money, then I'm gonna lose my whole business. There's just nothing else, and it's so critical, and it's everywhere. So I definitely agree, and I think that would be our stand, and we don't really have to do anymore. It's all on record, and we've all, we've all said something, and I think Judy's the only one that hasn't.
I, this is Judy. Because I pretty much agree with everybody else, so, you know, I can reiterate what everybody said, but I'm, I'm in agreement with everything that's been said.
I, this is kinda directed at Ted. Ted, what would be issues or what might come up with individuals in the county that have professional licenses? How would that work with them? I mean, the commissioners can ask the state to let it go, let it go or leave it alone, but how about these individuals with the professional licenses? Massage therapists or the barbers in town, anything like that?
Cosmetology.
Cosmetology, thank you.
Well, the state, the state has control of those, unfortunately. And like I said earlier, the county can ask the state to be receptive to your wishes and wants, but it doesn't mean they have to. If they want to come down on us, they will. If they don't think we're worth it, they probably won't. And a lot of, and if people, if the county commissioners make certain recommendations, and the people in Lander County, and we have a county full of fine people who are not gonna ignore that there should be some appropriate health protection should be in place if they reopen. So it's hard to gauge the future on what state will do.
This is Judy. So the state's already allowed certain businesses to open, your cosmetology and whatnot, with restrictions. So mainly you're looking at, you know, the bars and, and, you know, some other various businesses. And those are state licenses as well, so I don't know if that's really, you know, it's kind of a mute point. It's hoping that those businesses will follow the recommended guidelines as far as the social distancing, but they're open now.
What about the Health Department? I mean, if we've got some of these open and the Health, the State Health Department pulls their license?
You can't do anything about that.
No, but what we're saying is we could make a statement and ask them to be considerate or something like that because, because we have such few numbers compared to some of the other larger counties?
I was just, there's just so many inadequacies that don't add up, you know, as you can have a, I had my hair cut yesterday, but you can't social distance in a bar, you can't social distance in an election. You know what I'm saying, there's just so many things that don't make sense.
You can't go to a campground and be 50 yards away from somebody.
Yeah, exactly, but you can go to the grocery store and, and that's what I mean, it's just.
You should see the campgrounds that we have, they're absolutely packed in Kingston, just packed, and out at the, even the hot ponds. I mean, people say they've never seen so many, they must have all moved up from, you know, the other places because they can't get in the campgrounds. We're literally talking, you know, 50, 60, 70 campers all around that whole area.
All around Kingston?
All around Kingston and, and Dillman and, and the hot ponds, yes.
They're up in the?
State parks are closed, but I don't believe some of the other ones are.
Well, our national, the Forest Service hasn't opened from winter yet, so all ours are closed.
Well, and that's, that's a well settled, I guess, but, you know, some of them that are BLM are on private property, like the hot ponds and stuff, but, but like I said, agree with it or not, you know, we have a soft opening. And in, by the recommendations, but there are businesses that are excluded out of that. And if we, like you said, just basically kinda leave them up to the business owners and don't have any repercussions for them, take our stand, that it's a personal decision. That the county won't enforce it.
Alright, do we have any public comment? Wait, one second for me. Are you ready? Okay, now, are we ready for public comment?
I have a public comment from Shannon Thies from Kingston. She said the Kingston campgrounds are open.
Okay. Any other public comment?
I'll make a motion that Lander County take the stance of recognizing the governor's requirements, but also as a public body, recognizing the constitutional rights of its citizens, that we will not enforce violations.
Yeah, we cannot enforce, but we can recommend.
Exactly.
Yes, recommend that they will not be enforced by any local, by the local sheriff's office or the district attorney's office.
So, yeah, recommend?
But, recommend that, well, the recommendations, that they will not be sanctioned or fined for?
Loss of license?
Yeah, the repercussions, I guess, by, in violation.
Let's refine, can you take a minute, just a minute, and refine your, or your motion, please? So we have it clear?
Okay, Lander County will take the stance that we recognize the governor's mandates. we recognize the governor's mandates, but we, we will not take a stance in reprisal to local businesses that violate the governor's orders or recommendations in that we will not prosecute or retaliate, I don't know, not retaliate, prosecute.
You can't say that.
Those in violation.
We can't, we have, we don't take a stance as far, as far as the prosecution part of it. We don't have the right to say that one way or the other.
That's true.
Okay, Judy, Judy, this is Art. Let me, let me, as you were talking, I wrote this down. "We recommend that residents follow the governor's order, but we will not interfere with residents when practicing their constitutional rights."
Okay.
Okay, that's my motion.
With the appropriate health protections in place.
With health, health protections in place, with health protections in place.
With health, yeah, with the, uh, recommended health protections in place.
All right.
I'll second the motion.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, very good. We're, oh, I'm sorry, go, go ahead, Keith.
I just had a, for instance, I'd, I'd like to kinda get
Okay.
a little insight into, um, if, for instance, a state holder was to be fined or license removed, what, what could we do? What could this board do to protect them, or would, would we be back, would the board be backing them once with this, uh, motion in place? Would the board back them and, and go to fight for them with the state if, for instance, their state license was revoked?
Can we do that? Ted?
Ted, okay, Ted, did you hear that?
Yes, I already know. I don't think we can defend that, but we, we can, we can certainly assist them and make recommendations to them.
Okay. All right, I just think it's about some of the, the state license holders.
So, basically, we just made the statement that
So, we need, we need to make sure that this is, what, like, put in the bugle? And, and such, because they don't do any reporting anymore, and that way, it arms the citizens. If something does come up, they have at least the report on what the Lander County Commission did.
So, so what I could do if the commission would like is, um, we'll take Commissioner Clark's motion verbatim, and it was approved by the county commissioners, and we could post it around town, and we can try to get it in the paper. Sometimes they don't put our things in the paper.
Yeah, even if we don't, like you said, how can we fight for them? We can't really fight for them, but at least they can show them what their county's considerations were regarding their opening.
I think that where the confusion comes with most people, aside from anxiety, is the things that commissioners would like to do versus the things that we actually can do. I, I think we're all pretty much on the same page with this, whatever it is, but, uh, we are limited to.
I, I think what I'm picking up, though, from, from the ones that I talked to that are not open, is the fear, the actual fear. They don't know how long it's gonna be, and they've risked sometimes their full retirement savings and such, I mean, they have big nuts to crack with all kinds of utility bills and leases and things that they're buying, and, and it's the fear of losing everything. And that's what we're trying to address, and if, if they make that decision to open, they make it on their own, but they know that, at least, even though we, we don't have the power, we're, we're a hundred percent behind them and not gonna give them any penalties as far as their county is concerned.
Ted, I have a question. In Art's motion, he says residents. Does he need to amend that to say businesses?
Yeah, we, we could have certain local businesses that, that are operated by non-residents, so, in that regard, uh, we could, residences and all local businesses.
Okay, I'll amend.
I have another question. Oh, go ahead, Ted.
I'll amend my motion to, uh, recommend that residents of Lander Cali, Lander County follow the governor's order. Let me, hold on a second. We recommend that residents follow the governor's order, but we will not interfere with residents or business owners' constitutional rights. Is that it?
Does that work?
That work, Ted?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
I, I mean, I know you can vote, but I just have a question for Ted. Is, um, I, I have heard rumors of, you know, lawsuits, or I don't even know if there's class action lawsuits against the governor for, for these mandates. And hopefully, that will basically cure everything in the end for any businesses that do have loss of revenue. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, there, there are, there are a number of lawsuits that have been filed or will be filed against the governor's directive. In fact, there are lawsuits all over the United States against a lot of different governor's directives. Some are more, even hands than others. Our, ours falls like right in the middle. I mean, it could be a lot worse what they're doing, but we, we as a county don't have a lawsuit to file yet, uh, unless we find one that we find appropriate. I, Judy, I'll, I'll keep my eyes and ears open, and I'll, I'll try to check all out, ban the lawsuits, and see if anything or any of them are appropriate for us, and I'll bring it to your attention.
Thank you, because I think that's also something to consider, is, you know, how, how things play out, and following that to see what, what could be done at a county level also. Here, I'll copy it.
All right, so, do you have all that, Kathy, so we get to go to the next item? All right, very good. We're gonna go ahead and move on.
Need a vote.
We already did. I mean, you already did, 'cause you, you
Not only amend the board.
No, we, we haven't voted.
I amended, Judy seconded, we voted.
We all did, we did already.
All right. Can we do it again, just because I don't recall that we voted? We had couple comments, no comments?
All right.
I'll read it again.
All right.
Lander County Board of Commissioners will recommend that residents follow the governor's order, but the county will not interfere with residents or businesses that are practicing their constitutional rights.
No, I'll second it.
All right, second, Judy?
Wait, 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 if they take appropriate health protections.
Appropriate health.
With the, with the appropriate health safety, using the, uh, appropriate health safety guidelines.
All right, so who's the second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on. So, number three. For possible action, to approve, disapprove, the proposed ordinance 2020-01 finalizing dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Two, General Improvement District and its Board of Trustees.
Before we do anything on this, I wanted, um, some input from the commission. If you take a look at the last page with the rates. The question has come up under the, the tampering fee, which has been fifty dollars, and I believe Battle Mountains is a hundred, the tampering fee, is that? Is that right? Anyway, we do we, we do have some concerns of, um, a, a number of people.
Can the people on the bridge please mute your phones? Thank you.
Um, so we have had a few, and, and it isn't our regular people who are on the water all the time, it's people that turn it off in the wintertime, and they're, they're not paying the fee, and then they come up and spend a weekend or whatever, and, and turn their water on automatically, and water, and, and this type of thing, so we thought maybe if we could discourage that a little bit, 'cause they shouldn't be tampering with that at all, that we move that up to a hundred dollars, and Okay. And anyway, um, we'll, we'll take a look and see what Battle Mountains is, but, um, it looks like this is a long one, so
Okay, yeah, so, that's what Battle Mountain is.
So, um, I'll go ahead and, and
But I wanna ask a question. Ted, when they read in this resolution, does she have to read in all the rates?
No, it's attached. Read the title.
So you don't have to read the rates?
I don't have to read the rates, okay.
I've got a question here. On that last page, it says meter tampering fee, fifty dollars, will be applied to anyone who turns on or off the water?
Right.
If you have an emergency, you can't turn off the water?
No, 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 you can turn your, your water off, you have all kinds of places, but you can't run out and turn that off, no. You have to call.
I have a meter. In, in, in my side, my sidewalk, if I have a leak in my house, I turn that off. What's wrong with that?
That's tampering.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
Don't you have a shut-off on the house that you would use?
I have a shut-off, a shut-off on, uh, outside the meter that leads to my house.
Right, so what this has to do with is, is somebody would go in, shut their meter off, and then Yes? That's Oh, okay. Shut the meter off, and then they could, they could actually turn it back on without the water department coming out and turning it off and on. There, there's a way you can turn the meter off, 'cause usually when they, say
Oh, turn the meter off, not turn the water off.
Right, and some people will, they'll, they'll have the meter locked, for instance, for non-payment of bill. They'll go in and they'll cut the lock and turn it on, so they have water. That's the meter tampering. It doesn't have anything to do with you shutting flow to your house off for a water leak, or to put a sprinkler system in, or something like that.
Okay.
This has to do with tampering of the meter itself, county property.
And that's the one that Patsy's wanting to increase to a hundred, correct?
Yes.
Is that the one?
Yes. Battle Mountains is a hundred, yes.
Okay.
Now, when we, on these hookups, do they have to pay it all at one time, or can you prorate it in their bill?
I believe Burt has a program
Okay.
that would allow it to be spread out over months, maybe twelve.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly, up to thirty-six months, depending, I think.
Somebody starting a business, you know, seven hundred and fifty bucks might be a little expensive, and then four thousand, so, okay.
Okay, I, I will make a motion.
I have a question, Patsy.
Yes.
So, basically, under that line item, it says fire hydrant tampering fee of a thousand dollars will be charged to anyone caught assessing water from a hydrant for any use besides fire. Because, um, a lot of times, that's not totally convenient, uh, if there is a, a, um, hydrant stand for, um, project watering. Um, I know that in the past, um, trucks that hooked up to, to the hydrants for various persons, uh, purposes. I know when I was working for Honeywell, I was pulling off a hydrant. Of course, we didn't have the stand at that time.
Keith, don't we have one place to get water, and it's metered now, right?
So, so yes, there's a process in place for project water. If a company wants to, um, use project water, they get with Public Works, Water Sewer, and they're issued a meter, and they are charged for the meter, for the water, that they use off that hydrant based on the meter that they, um, have obtained from Public Works.
We started that, didn't we, just a couple years ago?
Yes, I believe it is so with, with Public Works.
But the wording on this is tampering. Um, when construction companies come in and they want the water, et cetera, et cetera, there's all kinds of things that are made with arrangements.
That's correct.
And this is called tampering, which is another, that you're doing things that you shouldn't be doing and haven't got authority to do, right? And there's always exceptions, and that's why we have appeals, okay? All righty, I'll go ahead and start this. I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2020-01. An ordinance finalizing the dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two, General Improvement District and its Board of Trustees. Title, "An Ordinance Providing for the Full Consideration of Protests of the Final Dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two, General Improvement District and its Board of Trustees, Providing for the Final Dissolution of the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two, General Improvement District and its Board of Trustees, and Providing for Other Matters Properly Relating There To. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lander, Nevada, do ordain. Whereas, the Lander County Combined Sewer and Water District Number Two is a general improvement district and quasi municipal formed under Nevada Revised Statutes, Chapter 318, created by the Board of Lander County Commissioners on November fourteenth, nineteen sixteen-nine, through Lander County Ordinance Number 14 dot two zero, presently, 13 dot zero eight dot zero one zero, and whereas pursuant to the ordinance number 13 dot zero eight, the LCC SWD two was established for the basic purpose of distribution, sale and delivery of municipal water and sewer services under NRS Chapter 318 to property owners within the boundary of the LCC SWD two, and whereas
Commissioner, you don't, excuse me, Commissioner. You don't have to read the whole thing.
I don't have to, I thought you said I did.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, just the title, just my title.
Oh, this is wonderful, okay, et cetera, et cetera, and authorize the chair. Oh, I'm so glad, that makes it wonderful. So, um, this includes the attachments, and I authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Wait just a second for public comment. All right, we're gonna go ahead for public comment. All right, no public comment?
Commissioners, there is one, one other thing.
Yes.
Unmuted.
You will notice that there has been no, no, uh, no letters in opposition to this that have been filed with the county clerk.
So, okay, so no letters of opposition have been filed with the county clerk?
Right. You, but we are going to have a public meeting, uh, to, to allow, uh, opposition, but at that public meeting, we're just going to give notice that no opposition, no protest have been filed.
Okay, okay, but we still have the hearing on June eleventh, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Is all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, none opposed? Moving on. So, number four, county manager, update, um, from the fiscal officer. Oh, I'm sorry, one second.
Ted, in that motion, does she need to add the rates with the exception of the change from fifty to a hundred?
Did they make the, uh, change?
They, she, did you have that in your motion?
No.
No, she did not have that in her motion. I think she needs to put that in the motion.
Well, if they hadn't made the change, then they would have to do, they wouldn't have to do a motion to make the change.
I could just make a separate motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. With the attached rates that were included with the ordinance, I make a motion that the meter tampering fee be moved to one hundred dollars.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? All right, very good. So, we're gonna go ahead on number four for the county manager, update from the fiscal officer.
Lake and Sullivan, for the record. Um, okay, so the quarterly unbalance, uh, report for the third quarter of FY nineteen twenty, um, is as the third quarter of FY nineteen twenty is as follows. The total revenue for the third quarter is twelve million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is up twenty-three point nine three percent compared to last year's third quarter. The total expenses for the third quarter is five million, eight hundred thirty-four dollars, eight hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and ten dollars, which is down nineteen point six five percent compared to last year's third quarter. And Lander County has received FAA grants money for the Bottom Mountain Airport in the amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety cents. In the Austin Airport, the amount is thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-three cents.
Question on the second, last page, the fund balance report fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty twenty, there's seventy-five percent right there at the upper left-hand corner. What's that represent?
That's showing that we're seventy-five percent through the year.
Through the budget cycle?
Yeah.
Yeah, just this page right here. I was wanting to know what that seventy-five right there meant, but now I understand, so.
The seventy-five percent of the year?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we're going to go ahead and skip to, over to number six. Can whoever's on the bridge, can you mute pretty please? Thank you. We're going to go ahead and jump forward to number six, for county manager for possible action to approve, disapprove the write-off for landfill invoice for New Nevada Gold Incorporated in the amount of forty-eight dollars.
So the original invoice for this was done on October twelfth of twenty eighteen, so it's about a year and a half past due. They've made several attempts to get them to pay. They've sent certified, and it comes back with attempted, not known on the address.
So what, what's the problem, I mean, why? For New Nevada, I mean, what, where, what does this bill attach to?
They dumped, it looks like they dumped out-of-county municipal solid waste, ten, it says ten volume on it, at four dollars and eighty cents per volume.
What does that mean?
So that's septic or sewage dumpage that was not within Lander County, so since it's not from Lander County, we charge for it. And there've been multiple attempts to get them to pay, and it's just weird that it's a forty-eight dollar bill.
And we've probably spent more of that trying to get them to pay.
So the commission has to allow the write-off of forty, forty-eight dollars, and we've been working on it like, like, making sure for a year and a half, so we've probably spent more time and effort than we've worked.
I'll make a motion we write off the forty-eight dollars for landfill invoice for New Nevada Gold Incorporated.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Any public, Robert?
This is Judy, I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Are we still allowing them to dump?
I don't think they're around anymore. We don't know who they are, Judy, but I think that if they ever do come back in the county, maybe we'll remember.
True.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know, Commissioner Allen, if, if the, if that's still being done or not. I would really doubt it, but I don't know.
So any public comment? All right.
Muted. Unmuted.
All right, moving back to number five, for possible action to approve, disapprove the cancellation of the twenty twenty fourth of July celebration. So I'm going to start off with this. I think it should be tabled. I don't, I think, this is a double-edged sword, well, another double-edged sword. I don't, we don't know what the governor's going to do, and it's that whole, once again, the gathering and tend-to-a-group, and we don't know what he's going to do. We, I just think that it, where I struggle with this is I don't want to cancel this, but I also don't want to get to the last minute, and he put a mandate to cancel, and then we have all these vendors who've paid for all this stuff. So we have to kind of figure out a happy medium, so we don't have vendors who have decided to come here and not be able to do their thing.
Well, how about if we charge the vendors after the event, then that way we know that everything was good. They set up, and something happens that's out of our control, at least we don't have to pay them back, but if we do go through with it, then they would have to pay.
Well, we, I think that the other, one second. The other idea is, is we can put it out, yes, we're not canceling at this time, but if it does get canceled, just know, be cautious that you might be out the money that you've invested to come here to do something. And just, just as a precaution to people who do want to, I mean, and as long as they know and they're aware, but they want to take that chance, that's entirely up to them, so.
Kathy, I know.
This is Judy.
One second, Judy, please. One second.
Okay.
I'm, I'm okay with you deferring it, but I do think we should have a drop dead date somewhere in June, that we do make the decision, because right now, I think for fifty or more people, that's the governor's phase three, right? So we should know next, well, maybe this month, if we're going into phase two and where he's going to be. But I think we should, like, at least take one of our meetings in June and go, that's it, it's a done, no.
So I, I don't think we should cancel. I mean, this is our Day of Independence, celebrating our patriotism, and it's, our fireworks, you know, there's generally six or seven guys that light those off. We have the fireworks already paid for. Again, you know, you have this festivity, it doesn't make sense. You go into Home Depot, there's a hundred people in there. You can't go to a park and practice social distancing, set up your orange cones, you know, before you get your barrier six feet apart. You know, if you want to go and shake the hand with your fellow friend, that's your choice to do that. If you don't want to go and partake, stay home. I don't think, again, like, what message is that? Let's cancel our Day of Independence. Our time to celebrate our, you know, it's, it's.
You don't have to cancel fireworks. We can always have the fireworks. You can see those from all over.
If I may clarify.
Can I speak now?
Okay, thank you. So I.
Can I, can I speak now?
Keith is talking. Keith's talking, just one second, please.
So I, I just want to clarify some things. I put this on the agenda, and it's, I'm not a, a non-patriot. I believe one hundred percent in what this commission believes in, that there's constitutional rights involved here. Part of my job is to look at liability of the county, okay? So this wasn't about fireworks, it wasn't about a parade, it was about things in the park, and it has to do with the governor's order. Would I, I don't know if I should say that on the record, so I won't. I don't, I don't want to get into a crosshair with the state or the feds. It has nothing to do with fireworks, it has nothing to do with the parade. I, I would love that to go on, and I hope it does go on. It has to do with Lander County-owned park and no social distancing, okay? The state's going around. I, I was informed recently that the state was looking at some of our cosmetologists. They made an inspection in Battle Mountain yesterday on a cosmetologist's business. They went in and they inspected it. So they're driving around, looking at things. My main concern here was the liability to Lander County in our park. I don't want to cancel it. I would love to, to have everything continue on at a thousand percent, and we celebrate the Fourth of July and our independence and our constitutional rights within this county. I would love that to happen, but I also have to look at the liability issues for Lander County, and what we have the potential to lose if we violate an order that is not constitutional. That's where I'm coming from on this, so.
You do your fireworks, you do your parade, and you're just saying your, your issues with the park, assembling in the park.
That's where the liability is.
It, it, it would, that, are we going to for, if we continue, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to be in the situation to say, to force employees to be a part of it. You know, if they want to volunteer, that's one thing. And I, I just, I want it to go on, but I have to look at the potential liability to Lander County.
Okay, can I speak now?
Yes, you may. Go ahead, Judy.
Okay, so it is subject to change, I've gotten word that the fireworks will continue, is the public is, you know, we've, we've kind of given them a little leeway in, in social distancing and hope that people, you know, be cognizant of that and maintain, is continue with the, with the parade. And if certain groups of individuals would like to, without any kind of county support, to present a Fourth of July celebration, it is, I think, under these times especially, it's necessary, it's needed for these people to be able to celebrate the independence of the United States. And, and the impression of what's going on now is the county can take a stance that we are not going to be funding anything, but we're not going to tell them no. If they want to have something at the park, then we're not going to enforce things, and, and let them go ahead, but to, to just arbitrarily say, no, we're not doing that. Let the people decide, let, let an organization plan it, and, and who knows? Just back again to free choice. If, if those people don't want to attend, they don't have to, but the people that want to can. And let them put on the celebration. And maybe if there's a waiver, who knows? But the other, other thing about it is, and, and this is, I think, a lot of speculation, I don't know how much facts are behind it, but it's also stating if the COVID does not survive after a certain temperature, well, typically July is ninety-five degrees or so, is, you know, you're in a prime, primary to, to be able to socialize without fear because it's killing the virus. Like I said, I don't know how much facts are behind that, but, but for us to tell the people of the county that are, are so fed up with and tired of this, and they want their life back to normal, is we owe it to them to let them celebrate the independence of the United States, because that's where your constitution comes in, is that, that's how it was, it was created. And to tell them no, it, it's just not right, because they need that time to celebrate and relax and enjoy some kind of normalcy.
So what, where are we at?
So I think what we, what the intent of this on the, this wasn't saying anybody, people couldn't do anything in the park. What this was is that it wasn't going to be a county function for the liability. At no time were we trying to say that nobody could hold any events in the park. Absolutely, that was never a thought.
And that's what I just stated, Liz, is, is go ahead and, and let, let somebody come in and organize it, and just tell, and don't tell them, no, they can't. Is without any kind of community involvement, you know, with, or not community, but without any county involvement, because I know a lot of times they will request some kind of grants for it. But let the county, the citizens band together and do what they want.
Let me, let me try this motion. The July Fourth Independence Day celebration will not be, will be, will be, let me try again, the Fourth of July Independence Day celebration will be in accordance with the governor's order. Nah, I'm not ready. I, I got to.
I'll make a motion that we do not disapprove.
All right, we're doing.
A cancellation of the Fourth.
I'm sorry, I want, we, what we wanted to do at this point, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we wanted to table it for now and then look at it again at the last meeting in June.
Well, you wanted to table, what, did the rest of us want to table?
No, my suggestion.
So we need time. These people need time to, to organize things.
They, but they can, they still can. They just know, everybody by now knows what's, what's on the table. So at this point, they know, but, I guess, my, my suggestion was to table it until the last meeting in June, but whatever, everybody else wants.
Well, if we're tabling it, really.
I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion that we allow the citizens to plan a Fourth of July celebration without county involvement, and not, not interfere in muneration, celebration plans.
All right, is there a second?
I kind of hate to see it go that way. I'd rather just say, take the opposite effect and say that the county will not be planning any Fourth of July activities, period. But I'm still in favor of the fireworks, if we can do fireworks, so.
I don't think fireworks are even an issue.
But the plant, the, the county never plans it. It's an ordinary, it's somebody else that steps up and says, okay, can we have some money for this and this and this? If we just blot out, tell them, you know, we can't give you any money for it, but go for it.
We have, the commission has been funding this stuff at the park for the last couple of years because of prior issues with doing that. So it, that's why the county did all the work, a lot of work, the last two years on that. So we have funded it, and the thing is, is this, we don't fund it, the, and they, we let the people do as they choose. Is that what? Yeah, and let the people do as they choose, and we, this year, it's just not going to be funded. And that's aside from the parade and the fireworks celebration.
And that's, that's the point, is we, we won't give them any money, but, but go ahead and do what you want.
Let me.
And, and if they want to get donations from, from businesses, who knows? Is let them plan something, let them do something, whether it's family gatherings and, and who knows what, but just, the county can't give them any money at this point.
If they don't gather.
But let them go ahead. If, if they can get money at other sources, good for them. But we stay out of any kind of liability issues in so many respects by that, by violating the governor's orders, is if the people want to do it, let them.
All right, one second, Judy.
The fireworks will go on. If they want a parade, the parade can go on.
All right, one second. We have some other comments. Hold on, please.
So what, what are the thoughts on the fireworks?
The fireworks, as far as I know, are going on. I mean, you talk about social distancing. You have maybe seven people out there working.
Yeah.
And they're wearing their, their full turnout and masks, and of course, I'm the only one that usually doesn't, but.
I mean, that's, that's county-funded. That's why I wondered if it should be part of the motion.
It's not county-funded.
That's not county-funded.
No, that's volunteer fire.
That's volunteer fire department.
Oh, okay.
It's the volunteer fire department.
I'll make a motion, but I'm, I'm going to do it on, on just the county side.
One second, please, hang on one sec. Did, did Judy make a motion?
Yeah, but it didn't go anywhere.
I made a motion.
I've got a motion.
Wait a second, we gotta hang on. So Judy's motion died. Moving forward.
Okay, let, let's try this. July Fourth, Independence Day will be celebrated in accordance with the governor's, governor's order and participants practicing their constitutional rights with safety protocols.
I'll second that.
It still doesn't address the, the fact that, that the county.
Without county assistance.
Yeah, the county, the county, we need to say something about the, the county will not, will not be funding something, yeah.
Without county assistance.
Or funding.
Assistance is funding.
Not necessarily. Assistance is going to be just our volunteers that come out with all our employees.
Funding. No, we may, we may need the sheriff's office to block the roads for the parade, but. Commissioners, the volunteer fire department are considered county employees, hybrid county employees, so I think we should use the word funding, rather than the.
I'll try it again. July Fourth, Independence Day will be celebrated in accordance with the governor's order and participants practicing their constitutional rights with safety protocols. The county will not have any involvement with assistance.
No, 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 with funding.
With assistance or funding. With assistance or funding.
Okay, let me ask this question, not to delay this, because I want it to be correct, but our volunteer fire department is a, is a department of our county which taxpayers paid for those.
That's why Ted's saying for him to use the word funding, not assistance, so that the fire department can still go forward, because there will be assistance.
Right, because the fireworks have already been paid for.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
And the other thing about it is, is, is when you have the sheriff's office that blocks off roads for the parade.
Correct, so, so just use the word funding rather than assistance.
I did, no.
You gotta take out assistance.
For the fifth time. July fourth, Independence Day will be celebrated in accordance with the governor's order and participants practicing their constitutional rights using safety protocol. The county will not fund this event.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Aye.
Very good. Public comment?
Robert.
Robert. One moment, second please. Wait a minute, public comment? Hearing none, we're going to move on. Oh, all right.
Muted, unmuted.
We're gonna take a five-minute break. After order. Go to number seven, sheriff's office. For possible action regarding allowing the Battle Mountain High School senior graduating class of twenty twenty to hang banners celebrating the senior class along the roadway in the same manner as the county holiday decorations are hung.
Uh, Robert Quick, this is.
This is Judy, I have a question.
Can you hold on one second, please, Robert Quick is speaking.
Oh, sorry, Robert.
This was actually put on on behalf of the senior class for the high school. And what they're doing to try and, uh, help celebrate some of their seniors this year is they're getting banners and they would like to hang them in the same style and manner that we hang in the Christmas decorations. I have spoke to the public works director as well as the convention and tourism, and they're both on board with whatever help that they need for that.
So my question being, do we know how many graduates we have this year?
My understanding is we have fifty-four seniors, I can't tell you the number of graduates, though.
So I, I think this is a wonderful idea, would it be possible on these banners to, you know, have the pictures of the, or photos, whatever, of, of the graduates, and do we have enough, um, basically the, the polls or, you know, mic polls and stuff to be putting them down Front Street, possibly Broad Street, for everyone?
The banners themselves were, um, ordered by the senior class, so I'm not sure what they've ordered. Um, and the hardware for it, between the county's hardware, based on the public works director and the conversation I had with Paula Tamari yesterday from Convention and Tourism, we'll have plenty of the hangers. And actually, the convention and tourism are, sound like they're better hangers anyway. But, um, I'm not sure what they're putting on the banners themselves.
I'll make a motion that we approve the senior class hanging banners.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 What else can we do to help these seniors?
I'm gonna, real quick, we're gonna do a public comment and then we'll. Okay, opening up for public comment. All right.
Muted, unmuted.
What else can we do for these seniors?
You could put it on another agenda, if you want to. But that isn't what's on the agenda.
Let's get another agenda item and talk about that, because the senior year, you know, being at the high school as long as I was, senior year is really important, but especially the last week of school, because there's an activity every day. And we're really losing out on this, I, I'd like to come up with something that we could do, so.
Our, I do believe that they are getting some sort of a graduation ceremony, they're in the works with the school right now, trying to prepare that, yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and recess the board of Lander County Commissioners and convene the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board, composed of the Lander County Board of Commission and the Lander County Sheriff. So for number eight, Sheriff's Office for possible action to approve or disapprove the Lander County license for Michelle Rowan, Michelle, Michelle Sonderman and Kelly Sonderman with Overtime Sports Bar and Grill LLC, um, DBA Mountain View Golf Club, golf, excuse me, golf house, clubhouse, goodness.
Very good, I think this is a.
Ron Unger, for the record, um, this is a bring back from the last commission meeting because of the paperwork. Uh, we've had to fill out all the paperwork, we've done all the background and the research, and, uh, we're ready to go on this.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, the Lander County liquor license for Michelle Rowan, um, Michael Sonderman and Keith Sonderman with overtime.
Kelly.
Kelly, it's Kelly Sonderman.
Thank you, with overtime sports bar and grill LLC, DBA for the Mountain View Clubhouse for on and off-site, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
So are we ready for public?
Okay.
One second, please.
I, I have a comment.
One second, please, are we ready? All right, we're gonna go ahead and go into public comment. Go ahead Judy.
Um, yeah, I should have waited, did, brain part here, did we vote on the last agenda item? Did I say aye and forget?
On the Fourth of July?
No.
Oh, on the senior, oh, did she, did you get, did you get her? Did you get, um, Judy voting? You didn't hear, couldn't tell if.
But it was voted on.
All right, do, would you like me, do, what do you want to do, redo that one? After, yeah, I know, because we're in this meeting, but that, my question is, let's finish, let's finish this one, and then we'll, uh, open it back up and discuss that one, please. I know, that's what I'm saying, let us finish this action, so. So, uh, Kelly, if you have something to say, you have to unmute yourself. All right.
Um, thank you.
I, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're, if, now, if there's no more public comment, so.
Muted, unmuted.
So we're adjourning the meeting of the Lander County Board of, um, Lander, um, Lander County Liquor Board and reconvening the meeting, the Lander County Board of Commissioners. So we're going back to the, uh, which one was that? Number seven.
Seven.
Number seven. So.
You're calling for another vote?
All right. All right, well, what we can do, can't we just find out who the first and second, and then all in favor, do we have, do we want? So let's, who was the first and who was the second? Okay, you, our first.
I made the motion.
Who was the second? Judy, you were the second, so.
I think I'm in second.
All right, so then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? All right, moving on.
I'm sorry Kathy, I just don't remember if you voted, so.
You're all right, no, it's fine, it's fine, not a problem. Well, it's better to be safe than sorry, so we're going on to number nine. For possible action to approve or disapprove the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one contract within the Board of Trustees of Elko County Library and Lander County Board of Commissioners, uh, Commissioners for Library Services and authorize the chair to sign, so.
Okay, I have to add a person here, how, so I do it in my normal way, or how do I add? Just push add and dial the number?
Do you want me to add him to the?
Yes, that would, please, thank you. I do something wrong and I drop them all.
Hi.
Is she on that guy? All right, very good, so, all right, we're gonna go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to know what the other post-employment benefits for twelve thousand dollars was.
Yeah, me too.
Oh. Huh?
Item nine.
So, which part am I reading?
The agenda item.
No, I know I'm nine, but am I reading this?
No, just the, just the agenda item.
Yeah, I did.
Um, Brian, before you ask your question, um, one other question reading through here, did we, because this was on the agenda last time, for, um, was it the, um, the internet? Because there were an item on last agenda.
So what we're going to do with that is when we get into the discussion on the contract, we will bring up the E-rate. Um, Kyla's in here to present numbers to you, and then we can, um, put it in the budget workshop meeting next Tuesday, or it'll be, it is in the budget workshop meeting for next weekend, or next week, but you guys can discuss it and approve it here, and then we incorporate it into the final budget. So it'll be added, it'll be discussed. If you want to go with the E-rate, it will be part of this contract in addition to the fifty, to the total amount of, of the hundred and four thousand ninety-one dollars. So when we, when, after the discussion of the contract, Kyla will come up and discuss E-rate, and she'll give you the numbers that, um, we have to see, to add it to this contracted amount. That's why there's no.
Figure.
Figure in item nine, is because we need to add, discuss adding that E-rate.
So, yeah, my, my question was the same as the first time, was, uh, the twelve thousand dollars, other post-employment benefits? What was, what, what are they? What are we paying for there? Melissa, are you there?
Yes, Kathy, Antonucci and Melissa spent their local here. So the twelve thousand dollars, um, that benefit is actually for insurance for retired employees. Um, she retired back when the county's policy was you could retire with full benefit, and we're still paying on that.
So is that back, um, when like with Jane Ripley and all those guys had to retire? Because, Robert, you know about, more about that, remember when they said by this date, people have to retire? Were, it was the county still paying that, or was that part of the state? I didn't realize the county was paying for those employees.
No, that's not.
Uh, Robert Quick, I can't tell you fiscally what, who's responsible for paying that, but yeah, that's back in the Jane Ripley days, Sandra Carson days, when you retired, you had full medical benefits for life. Um, and my understanding was we do have something in the budget for long-term retirement benefits, but I don't know if that's what they're talking about.
Were these full-time rep, re, uh, employees?
Um, at the time, yes, they worked full-time receiving benefits.
And had we been paying into purse on these?
I don't have that information, that's before my time. Um, and this is, this is just for one employee, the twelve thousand is, uh, for the Elko County Insurance Policy.
Melissa, were they, were they Lander County employees or Elko County employees?
So the way it works is, it's a Lander County librarian, but through the contract, they're considered an Elko County employee.
I'd, I'd like some research into this.
So they're, they're under Lander County as staff, but they fall under Elko County policy.
So they worked in the Lander County Library, but because of the contract, they were, they were paid from Elko County? Is that, that's correct, right, Melissa, Melissa?
Yes.
So, um, Melissa, this is, uh, Kathy Ancho. Why was under the, because the state was the one who mandated that retirement at that age to get that benefit? I did not remember, um, that we, the county was paying a portion of that, because the cat, the, the, the count, the, um, state mandated it, and then the benefits, as I was told from retirees, had been, um, cut down significantly since then. But I didn't realize, I'd never heard or seen that Lander County was paying a portion of that, since it was mandated from the state for that specific date for retirement.
Now, this is a little confusing for me, when I retired, I retired because at that time, I could get a four hundred dollar stipend from the, uh, state on my insurance. And I, I agree with Commissioner Ancho that this is, should be state-funded, not county-funded. I don't know any county employee that's ever had their insurance paid for by an employee after they've retired, it just doesn't seem right. And I'd, I'd ask for some research into this before we, uh, make a decision.
I got one other thing, if we're gonna be researching, why don't we research to see what it takes to, uh, run our own library?
Amen.
And get out of the contract.
I can do that if that's, that's the direction.
So let's, let's table this and, and let Keith do some research and bring it back.
All right.
The, the one thing, Commissioner, excuse me, real quick, the one thing we do need to discuss is the E-rate. That is a time-sensitive issue, and so we do need to talk about E-rate and how, and the funding, the different funding, um, amounts.
This is a broadband service?
This is the broadband service, it has to go through our library system, so we have to talk about that. Or, or, that, there has to be an approval or, or disapproval on that, but we've already done a lot of the work, groundwork, the RFPs and so forth, so.
So when you're talking E-rate, is that, would that be under the network ac, access integrated library system? Or is it something separate?
Yes.
Um, I have a question.
That's what it's under Judy, yes.
So within the way this is written, are we, is that included in here, because that's not. So, so then what, do we have to re-agendize it, or what do we have to do? Because it, even though it's time-sensitive, which I understand, it's not part of it, isn't mentioned.
Well, so, so that's why there's no dollar amount on the, um, on the actual number nine item, is so that you can discuss the contract, but we can also discuss the E-rate. Because there's different numbers, different amounts, so you can table the contract, but you can talk about E-rate and we can include that. E-rate amount that the commission decides we want to do.
Because the E-rate is for the library.
Because the E-rate is for the library, it's only for the library.
Well, and I understand that, but the way this is written is for the, um,
Contract.
Contract. Which the E-rate would have to go in the contract.
This is part of the contract.
It's library services, it falls under library services, yeah, and, and, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion about it.
Okay, very good, all right.
So with that, then it, with that saying the network access integrated library system with a total of five thousand five dollars, is that what we're talking about?
No, we're gonna let Kyla explain, um, the pricing for us.
Judy, I don't, I'm not sure where in the contract it is, but no, it's not five thousand five dollars. Um, I came to you guys a couple, uh, the last commission, just to let you know that there'd be additional monies to be added into the budget. Um, there was Sky Fiber, I originally told you it was about a hundred and twenty-one thousand. I have since then found out that, um, through discussions with, with these ladies that are on the phone, that, uh, that will actually be discounted upfront, so it brings it down to seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents with Sky Fiber. Sky Fiber, um, and then the Westnet was. with Sky Fiber. Sky Fiber, um, and then the Westnet was eight thousand three hundred. Um, you guys seem to be leaning towards Sky Fiber, um, because they were more reputable company. So, um, that's pretty much all I needed to say, is give you those numbers, the breakdown, so, uh, if anybody on the library side has anything to say about it.
Do it, um.
Kyla? I'm sorry, Kathy?
Go ahead.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck on this network access. Um, don't we have internet already at the library?
You do. This is not just internet, though. I mean, this is a fiber connection. This is gonna give them a hundred, um, hundred megs of service there. So you'll be doing a lot more than just searching the internet. You'll be able to do, uh, video calls, conferences, things of that sort, online learning, um, much more than what we have now. It's, it's a, it's an actual broadband connection.
And not only that, we discussed months ago in the past, doing this project, right? Um, so this project and all of it, um, all the mannerisms that go with it has al, already been approved. And now we're at the very end of the stage of it, deciding which, which company we want to go with.
So I, I support it. Um, I'm just kinda curious, from the employees at the library, is do we have enough equipment for people to use that, and how much use do they actually think that they would get?
The, um, project is part of the equipment that goes with that at the, and, and within the contract as well, Judy?
Not only that, um, Judy, but it also gives us a couple broadband hotspots here in the community that we can then extend out to our businesses and local residents. This is, this is the same thing we've discussed over the last six months.
But the hub has to be at the library, and this is north and south. This is Elko and Austin as well.
This is because of the E-rate discount. It has to be at a school or at a library or hospital. This is what it's specifically for.
We can't have it here in the county building?
No.
Not for the E-rate discount, no, and the state match.
Oh, in terms of this contract, Commissioner Clark pointed out, item three, it says that, uh, Lander herewith agrees to pay Elko County the sum of a hundred and four thousand ninety-one dollars in quarterly installments. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So four hundred thousand dollars is what that contract costs us?
No, it's, it's the one hundred and four thousand ninety-one dollars divided by four.
In the sum of a hundred and quarter, that's not what it says.
Yeah, I think that needs to be changed to what quarterly amount would actually be.
I didn't write it.
You have to have to get that language corrected, that's.
It'd be, uh, a hundred and four thousand ninety-one dollars total paid.
To be paid in quarterly installments.
Installments, yeah, something like that. But anyway, um, I'm still, I still would like to see what it would cost, or the idea of us running our own, you know?
I accept that idea.
And then I, I do like the idea of Sky Fiber, since they're, they're the reputable, you know? It's a little bit more.
I like the idea of Sky Fiber, my question being is for the county to provide, provide internet, um, you know, whatever the radius is for, for personal use, um, area. I mean, I, I don't want to have the county pay for the internet, and, you know, somebody a couple of blocks away can log me in and save, save that, that broadband fee that they'd be paying some outside business. I mean, if it was strictly used for, um, county purposes, and, I mean, if they can tie it into the broadband to get their own account.
They, Judy, that, that, Robert.
Hold on one second, we're gonna have, have Robert do some explanation.
You're a little better at explaining the, the broadband and how it works. Do you mind letting Judy know she was just asking that if we, as a county, pay to get that to the library, that other people could use it, but that's not the point of it. They would have to get their own account. So I, could you say that in better words than that could?
Well, uh, Robert, quick, so that's, that's the gist of it. It, it should have some sort of a security on it for the hotspots that's controlled by the county indoor library system, so it's just not gonna be an open network. Uh, similar to what the county, this county building has, they have an open public wifi that anybody can just walk up and connect to. So that could be used for that, but that's the determination by, I would assume, the board who's controlling that, whether they're going to allow that, at some portion of it, like they do the counties.
Let, let me ask this question. So if we have that service, can our local, um, internet providers use that? Um, can they bounce off that then to sell service to other residents? That would help speeds or not?
That would actually be, um, what we're gonna bring back in the future, as far as if we want to move forward, if that's.
Heck, yeah, man.
So here's an example. Um, if, if the county uses PC computing, and they've got towers and whatnot on top of the, uh, uh, county building, is I have PC computing, it's, it's aimed at the county buildings, but I pay my own service. And that's basically the principle of this.
Yes, Judy, yes. Nobody's gonna be able to use it for free. They're going to have to get their own, this, they'll have to make their own contract with the service provider of the broadband.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, go ahead.
For Commissioner Allen, I, correct me if I'm wrong, when you're asking about the five thousand and five dollars? It, you're asking if, if we go with Sky Fiber or Westnet or whatever that you guys decide to go for, the board decides to go for, are we still gonna pay that five thousand five dollars as part of our internet services? Is that correct?
Um, well, actually, now that you bring it up at tonight, that's a, that's a good point, but I'd kinda forgotten about that Skynet seventeen thousand dollars. So that's what I was thinking with this, with the internet access, but, um, good point is if we do go with the Sky Fiber, do we eliminate that five thousand five dollars?
And, and that would be a, a Melissa question, if you're still there, Melissa?
Uh, Commissioners, this is Kathy Antonucci for the record. Um, that five thousand five is, uh, it covers more than just internet. That actually is Lander County's portion of our cost for our integrated library system, which is our software that we use to, um, catalog items and enter patrons. So that, that would actually still remain.
Well, I, unless anybody has any other questions, I think the consensus is that we'd like to go with the Sky Fiber, but I also think we maybe like to investigate, um, separating the Lander County library system from, from Elko. Is that correct? Further discussion for that?
I can't understand it.
She, she's asking, um, Comi, Commissioner Allen is, is, is asking if the commission is interested in the Sky Fiber, and if so, to, to proceed with that or vote on it, as well as is the commission interested in seeking, uh, running our own library?
Yeah.
Correct, Commissioner Allen?
Yes, thank you.
So as far as the motion, are we just voting on the Sky Fiber at this time? Alright, so can I ask?
And then it would be part of the contract, so that we can put it in for our budget. That's the key, what we need to know now.
But just for the fiber, not the contract?
Yeah, we'll just.
Yeah, because we're just, we're just, we're, there's a chance.
Yeah, cause we're holding up on the whole contract, but we're, but the motion should include, should be that we include the, the E-rate for whatever.
So, Ivy, would you like to make that motion?
Okay, um, I'll make a motion that we in, include the E-rate, um, on the Elko library contract.
But I believe you're going to table the contract at this point, and you're gonna go ahead with Sky Fiber, so you, I want, I would, I would request.
Can I change? Can I make that motion?
It's already been made.
Patsy, Patsy's making it, so hold, hold on.
We're trying to formulate.
We want her to just make the, we want you to just make the motion for the Sky Fiber amount to be budgeted for.
And then table the contract at this time, and, and, and direct me to look into a.
Okay, cause my motion was that we included the E-rate with Sky Fiber as part of the Elko contract, so it can be budgeted. I'm not saying anything about tabling right now. I just, I'm not approving it either. I'm just saying that we include it.
One second, we're just, we're trying to get something figured out, so hold on, pretty please, you absolutely can.
Well, yeah, but this is, this is kinda going along with that motion, a, a comment for the motion.
Alright, go ahead.
Is that we make a motion to approve Sky Fiber in the library system, and to, to include the grand total. So basically, um, the grand total of the, um, contract would be up to, we'll say a hundred and, uh, twenty-two thousand for budgeting purposes, and bring the contract back for the Elko, um, or, or not bring, not bring it back, but, but to discuss the possibility of our own library system. So basically saying that we will approve up to a hundred and twenty, uh, two thousand dollars for high, um, uh, library system to create Sky Fiber.
Okay, hang on a second, hold on.
You're kinda convoluted a little bit here, I'm, I'm.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
What I would say is I see where Judy's going with it, so that we have the whole funding for the entire library. So instead of calling it the Elko County contract, I could see what she's saying is to fund up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and put it in the budget for purposes of life, of the library.
Okay.
So that we have the funding for all of it.
Because, because I still have questions on the twelve thousand, if we, I'd like not to, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's just saying not to exceed up to a hundred and twenty-two, so that we have the purposes of the budget, the funding in the budget.
Okay, so do we want to amend it in the verbiage that, how Liz did, so it's under, so we all understand, please?
You undo that, Patsy, you want me to?
No, go ahead, Judy.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for, um, in, in the budget for the Lander County library system, uh, not to exceed a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for the Lander County highway sys, uh, uh, library system, and bring it back for future discussion.
Alright, do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 One second for public discussion. Okay, so a public comment, do we have any? Alright, moving on.
Muted. Unmuted.
So, moving on to number ten for correspondence, reports, future agenda items.
I, I would just like to remind Commissioners, next Tuesday, we're, we have, I believe, fifteen items that we need to, to, uh, catch up on or clarify, vote on for, um, our final budget, which will be presented to you Thursday. And I don't have anything unless you have anything for the following, um, a week from today's regular commission meeting.
So we have a meeting Tuesday and then Thursday, that's next week?
Yes.
You're gonna, you're gonna need a little bit of time to research this twelve thousand dollars in the contract. How long will it take you to get back on that?
I, I, I think, I believe the, um, the twelve thousand will be pretty easy to track down. I, I don't know what it's gonna take to look at. I'll have to get with Elko and see what it takes.
I have a real good idea, and I'll be happy to talk with you on it.
Thank you.
One of the things I do want on, I, I think we should address our fire restrictions. Um, like I said, especially with the people that are camping up Kingston Canyon and such, um, I have a real concern, and, uh, and I know the Forest Service has had a concern, and they, they put fire restrictions on early because of the COVID and such, and they're saying, people are out, and we think we need to, to curtail this on what they're allowed to do. And if we don't get it on ASAP, um, we could be asking for some additional things that may be happening, so that's one. And my other concern was on the Endo meeting, um, whether we were gonna do one by telephone, or they were gonna send us something, or that just kind of disappeared.
I haven't heard anything from, um, from Lee Bonner, from Endo.
Okay, you might wanna check and see if we can get it on the, the following agenda.
Patsy, don't we usually, traditionally, we've gone along with the BLM, when they put their fire restrictions, we put our.
Sometimes, but I don't, I haven't seen anything on BLM, only the Forest Service, so I didn't, I think he was in touch with them. But regardless, um, I still think we should address it and, and get it on there.
Well, we can put the recommendation, we can put the recommendation out there, we don't have an ordinance.
Right.
I agree with Patsy, and I think that this year we're looking at a potentially bad fire year. I know there was a, a fire already by Eli. And I guess the other question maybe we wanna consider is creating an ordinance, so that we can enforce it.
Are we good to go on to probably reading in public comments? Alright, so, reading it for public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any, and discussions of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based on time, place, and manner, but public comment based on viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Oh, go ahead.
This is Kyla Sharp for the record. I just wanted to remind you guys that our fourth, I know it's already over, but I missed public comment on that one, sorry. Our Fourth of July celebration was also supposed to be our hundred and fiftieth year big bash. So I'd just like to maybe suggest, if we do have a little bit of money in the budget, that further, further, a little further in the year, that we can celebrate that before.
Oh, no, I agree, and I think that when restrictions, I think as a whole, as a community, we're going to celebrate, so we'll just include it all into one big bash for everyone, so yeah, absolutely.
I knew that that was budgeted and all that.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
I think everybody else in the community would, as up here, would too.
Anna Panola with the Building Department. Um, I just forwarded Keith this morning, official letter from the ISO that we got our rating, and we were at an eight for both commercial and residential, and we dropped to a four for residential and to a three for commercial, so that should be a good benefit for businesses in Lander County.
Very nice, and thank you.
And also, I just wanna give a quick update. We had the Stanley Security come yesterday, do a walkthrough, and we're gonna go hard at it Monday, so about two and a half, three weeks should be completed for cameras and security.
Good, thank you for all your work.
Part of the discussion with security yesterday is we're gonna have to take the whole system down for two to three days, and you'll have to use your hard keys. And we're, every, almost everybody's is broken or expired anyway, so, just FYI, and I will put out a mass email to let everybody know when and how long for.
Very good, thank you.
Kathy, this is Judy.
Yes.
I know we can't discuss it, but, um, Kyla brought up a very good point, that we had actually already funded the Fourth of July parade, or Fourth of July activities, three D, hundred and fifty year celebration.
Ivy, you understand what she's saying?
She said that it's already been funded because of the hundred and fifty year celebration, that the county's already put funds in place.
And that's fine, if it's, we have to roll over something, can't we just roll it over?
Yes, we can.
So that might need to be added to the budget.
Pardon, oh, that sounds, oh, what she's saying is for the budget, it needs to be added and to rolled over? Alright, very good, yes, thank you.
Two things I missed, and I apologize in my update, I'll make this real quick. Number one is we are working, um, on an agreement myself, and Public Works are working on an agreement with BLM to do, uh, the roadside hazard reduction. We've talked about it a little bit, and we will bring that forward once we, we get things in place to work with the B, BLM, local BLM, to do roadside hazard, um, reduction. The other thing I wanted to. The other thing I wanted to bring up is with the golf course. So currently, the golf course, we were able to open it, and what I've done right now is I, I, there's no fees in place due to the fact that if something happens and we have to, to close down again, then we're gonna have to look at a whole bunch of, of reimbursements or adjustments. So at this time, the gol, golf course is open, but we're not, we're not charging, and we may not even be able to be charging for the year at all, just because of who knows what's gonna happen.
Well, that might be a good thing, because if we charge, then we would be responsible if they're exercising their constitutional rights. It's beyond us. All we're doing is watering and cutting.
Yes.
Maintaining.
Yes.
All right, you have to turn your mic on.
I wasn't even, I, I wasn't even charging for, uh, the rent or cart storage fees, anything, 'cause I, I just don't know what's gonna happen. So I wanted to make the commission aware of that. Thank you.
And just to let you all know that they did have, um, their construction meeting. I think Bert was down there this week for that, and they're starting on Highway fifty. Should be next week.
Keith, I have a question.
Yes.
So did you get, get an MOU from the BLM on that? Roadside field break?
With Brock, Ulik, with the roadside stuff?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I had a discussion with Brock. Um, we were gonna meet earlier this week, and we, we had to can, or last week, I can't remember. We had to cancel. I just did get another email from him. We'll set up a meeting and get things going here shortly.
Be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are we ready for adjournment? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.